It's six oh two, I'm gonna call the joint meeting of the Board of Education and the Board of Education to Order. Uh Kate?
I will call the joint meeting of the Board of Education and Board of Education to Order as well.
Our agenda this evening begins with a presentation of the government slam and then discussion with next steps. Oh, sorry, not slam. Um, I forgot the name.
And MP planning.
Okay, um, so go ahead, the floor is yours.
Alright, excellent.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, what would you be sharing? There you go.
Alright, good evening, everybody. My name is Pat Gallagher. I'm a principal with MP Planning Group. Um, we specialize in planning and demography and we're Connecticut-based company and we do work with a lot of Connecticut school districts. And enrollment projections are really a great first step as you're undertaking a long-range plan, determining investments you want to make in your facilities, and trying to understand what's enrollment looking like over the next 10-year period. And so, um, this evening, I'll just go through our report, which touches on not just enrollment trends, but also looking at wider town-wide trends that are influencing your school system. The state of Connecticut requires that you submit enrollment projections as part of school construction grant applications. They take the eight-year peak projected enrollment for each facility and use that for determining your reimbursement rate. And so having those projections by building um, is going to be important for understanding, um, you know, which projects are going to go forward and potential cost implications as well. So to start, I'll get into enrollment drivers, which are larger community demographic and housing trends that shape your community. We started by looking at census data, leveraging the 2020 census data that was available. And the word stability really comes to mind when looking at the overall data for East Windsor. A very stable community between 2010 and 2020. You added about 30 residents, so very slow growth, but you grew. And many Connecticut municipalities did not grow over that 10-year period. However, it was not anywhere close to the growth rate you experienced between 2000 and 2010, where you grew at almost 14%. Uh, the latest estimates from the Department of Public Health indicate that a stable trend continuing at about the same population as you were in the 2020 census. However, if we look at trends by the different age groups within your community, um, we really start to see, you know, some different trends here. Like many communities, uh, your population is aging and we saw a growth in every age group 55 years old and over. A lot of that is due to the aging of the large baby boomer cohort, who is now in that 65 and older category. Um, and so we now have a population that is over 40% uh, over age 55. And so that's an age group that is less likely to have students in the school system. We saw a decrease in the number of adults between the age of 40 and 54. So these are, you know, families that are most likely to have older school-age children. Um, so that age grouping decreased over that 2010-2020 period. But we did see an uptick in younger families. So that 30- to 39-year-old age group or the millennial generation, we did see some growth there. Um, and that's an age group that's more likely to have elementary-age students. And so that's something that, uh, when we look at our enrollment trends, um, is feeding some of those more recent enrollment changes over the last three to five years. And then our younger population has decreased, but that largely corresponds with, um, you know, the decrease in middle-aged adults as well. Births are a really important demographic indicator that we look at. It's the best available data for projecting a kindergarten class. And historically, um, there's a pretty close relationship between the number of births and the number of kindergartners you have five years later. And as births go up, kindergarten classes tend to get larger. As births go down, kindergarten classes tend to get smaller. Um, and after experiencing a peak, um, in the late 2000s, early 2018s, uh, at about 130 per year, births have decreased and stabilized at between 100 and 110 uh, per year over the last, um, 10 years or so. And right now, um, the, uh, the 2023 kindergarten class, um, their birth cohort was 102 births back in 2018. The next five kindergarten classes corresponding with the births over the last five years are about the same size, slightly bigger, um, but in the same general order of magnitude. Housing is another really important indicator that we like to understand because we know that, you know, there's, there's two ways that, um, that students arrive in East Windsor, either they're born here or they move here. Um, so taking a, uh, a look at housing trends is really important to our process. Um, the diversity of housing stock is, um, really important. Ten, uh, communities that are predominantly single-family home tend, tend to be much more cyclical. They have their ups and downs depending on, um, when homes sell. Multi-family housing tends to be a lot more transient, so they turn over more frequently. Um, and having that nice balance of housing that you have here means that you're, um, you're not experiencing those highs and lows that a predominantly single-family, um, community does, but you're also not experiencing that same level of transience that in urban center. Home sales are perhaps one of the biggest, um, data points that we look at. Um, knowing that as the number of sales increases, uh, we tend to see higher migration and more students moving into your community. Um, and again, the, the trends we see in East Windsor are very similar to what we've seen in many of the communities that we work in, in the region, where, you know, we experienced our most recent peak in sales, um, back in the, uh, mid 2000s, prior to the Great Recession. We saw a very, um, dramatic decrease in the late, uh, 2000s during, during the recessionary years, and then a gradual recovery over the next 10 years. Um, but what we've seen across Connecticut is in 2020 and 2021, a, a real uptick in the number of home sales. And, um, anecdotally, we know there's a lot of generational turnover in those sales, where it was empty nesters selling homes to families who may have, uh, students in the school system. However, over the last three years, we've seen the number of sales decrease as mortgage interest rates go up, sale prices go up. Um, sales are down across the board in almost every community that we work in. And so those, um, those years back in 2020, 2021 have not persisted over the last few years. Housing prices, um, are obviously one of the contributors to that decrease. And again, across the, across the state, we've seen a rapid increase in home sale prices. Um, in the, uh, years leading up to the pandemic, you could buy a single-family home in East Windsor, the median price was under $200,000. Um, as of 2023, it was over $300,000. And so the increase in prices are also influencing the buyer's market as well. Housing permit activity is another, um, uh, data point that we track. Uh, and again, the more housing units you build, uh, the more likely you are to see, uh, students move into the community. And this, I think, really shows, um, the changes kind of pre and post-Great Recession, where, you know, prior to the Great Recession, you were averaging, um, about 75 units annually, and it was a mix of single-family and multifamily. Um, and then that decreased fairly dramatically, um, by 2011. And with the exception of 2018, permit activity has been very stable at between 10 and 20 units annually, almost all, um, single-family with the exception of 2018, which I believe is the Connect East Windsor, um, 55 and over development on Route 140, captured in that 2018 permit data. And our baseline enrollment projections assume that this level of housing, um, construction is going to continue over the next 10 years. So averaging about 15 new single-family units annually each year. We also reached out to the planning department to get an understanding of any developments that are in the pipeline. Um, and this is important to know whether you have anything that's, uh, above and beyond what you've experienced over the last five years or so. Uh, we do know a couple of projects, um, of note, uh, the West River Farm subdivision, uh, one of the larger subdivisions in recent memory, um, has been built over the last, uh, few years. Right now, there's, uh, 22 units completed. Another, um, 47 units are planned. They've been averaging, um, about five to 10 units annually. And we anticipate that that development is going to be built out over the 10-year period. We also have a few, um, remaining units at New Barry Village, which is another, um, age-restricted 55 and older community, um, that are under construction, nearly complete. Um, as I mentioned before, the large apartment development, uh, the Connect 55-plus East Windsor project, um, is now, um, completely, at least on the outside, uh, may not be occupied at the moment, but, um, construction is complete. And then two smaller subdivisions that were recently completed as. Um, one thing we did note, and this is, um, really driven by the state's process, is that you were not allowed, uh, when we submit enrollment projections to the state to include speculative housing growth. You're obviously a community that has a lot of agricultural land, a lot of vacant land, that hypothetically could support housing. Um, the state doesn't let you incorporate that into your projections unless there is a, an actual development proposal that is in the pipeline. Um, so just wanted to clarify that. Getting into our enrollment trends, um, we saw our most recent enrollment peak, um, back in the, uh, mid 2000s, where you had over 1,500 pre-K through 12th grade students. And again, this is not a unique trend to East Windsor, where we started to see declining enrollment in the mid 2000s, um, declining, uh, by just under a third, reaching, um, about 1,050 students by the 2016-17 school year. And that's largely due to that large millennial cohort aging out of the school system. There were, um, smaller, there were a smaller number of children behind them, um, and they entered kindergarten, and, and that's been reflected in your enrollment trends. But what we've seen over the last eight years is that enrollment has stabilized. So that declining trend you saw from 2006 to 2016, um, is no longer. And your enrollment has stayed really remarkably stable at between, um, 1,000 and 1,100 students over the last eight years. Um, however, we have seen some differing trends by the different grade groupings. I'm looking at the last five years, so that takes 2019, 20, the last pre-pandemic year. Um, we've seen an expansion of the pre-K program now reaching, uh, 79 students for this past fall. Uh, elementary school enrollment decreased by 20 students, um, although we did see a pretty, uh, modest uptick, uh, over the last year at the elementary level. The middle school enrollment's been very stable, um, and the high school enrollment has decreased by, uh, 30 students as larger classes graduate and some smaller classes move up to ninth grade. We also wanted to take a step back and compare East Windsor to some of your neighboring communities. Um, so this just shows all of your neighbors, uh, and, uh, most of your neighbors also saw declining enrollment over that five-year period. East Windsor, um, declining by about 5%, if we're looking at just K-12 students excluding pre-K. Um, Ellington and Windsor Locks decreased at a faster rate. Enfield and Southfield decreased, um, at a little bit slower of a rate. Um, Windsor was very stable. We did see three neighbors that grew, uh, Vernon and Summers grew very, very modestly. And South Windsor, which is really an anomaly in the region, um, grew by 10 and a half percent over that five-year period. Uh, I've worked in South Windsor for the last eight years, uh, and so I did look through your enrollment data to see if any of the, the trends that we've seen in South Windsor are showing up here. Um, there's nothing that I saw that led me to believe that any of those trends happening to your south are spilling over your border in East Windsor. As I noted before, births and kindergarten enrollment are traditionally linked well with, you know, larger kindergarten classes, uh, coming from larger birth cohorts. Um, and what we've seen over time is that, you know, historically, if we look back almost 20 years ago, your kindergarten class and your, um, the number of births five years prior were about, uh, almost a one-to-one ratio, about, uh, 0.9 to, to one. So every hundred births you had, you'd have about 90 kindergartners show up. That started to, to decrease. That gap started to widen, um, in the late 2000s and early, uh, 2018s, decreasing, uh, to about 0.7, so 70 kindergartners for every hundred births, uh, in that period. And that's largely influenced by the offerings regionally, so the opening of the regional magnet schools in, in, uh, the credit, uh, program. Uh, but what we've seen over the last few years is those lines are starting to get closer together again. Um, and so over the last five years, that ratio has increased to almost 0.8. Uh, and this last, uh, this past year had a ratio of 0.85, which was the highest since, uh, 2012, 2013. And so this is, uh, either suggesting that we're having more zero-to-four-year-olds moving to East Windsor, or more of your students born here are choosing to remain to East Windsor versus some of those regional options. Um, we also took a deeper dive beyond just kindergarten, looking at, uh, resident students who may be enrolled in other public school or technical school programs. Um, we have data going back to 2016-17. And, um, back in 2016-17, about, uh, 13 and a half percent of your resident students, um, attended another public school program. That includes your regional magnet schools, your technical high schools, um, and other special programs. Over the last five years, um, that has started to decrease with the regional magnet school program enrollment decreasing the most, um, from 136 back in 2016-17 to just 100 students, uh, for the 2022-23 school year. So that's a trend that again is baked into our baseline projections, where we're assuming out of that gradual decrease in the number of students opting for the regional magnet schools. Um, and I will also note, um, after we had a kind of our internal meeting going over this, that, um, this, the totals for the East Windsor Public Schools doesn't include any of your open-choice non-resident students. So those numbers may not add up with what the chart will show later. We also looked at withdrawals, uh, to private school, again, understanding of magnitude. Are there a lot of students withdrawing? Um, not a tremendous number. We see a handful, um, in the elementary grades and slightly more in the middle and high school. Uh, largely parochial, um, Catholic high schools in the region. We do a migration analysis as part of our projections, where we look at your student database from one year to the next, and flag students who have moved into town. So this gives us an understanding of the impact of the housing market, um, on your enrollment. And what we've seen is that, you know, you have been very consistent in terms of the number of new to district students in any given year, ranging from about 100 to 120, although we did see upticks in, uh, 2021 as well as this past year. Um, and we, uh, did note that, uh, about a quarter of your new to district students came from a single development, the Mill Pond Village apartment complex. Uh, and again, that speaks to, uh, rental housing being more transient. We have more move-in and move-outs than rental housing at any year. We also looked at net migration, which, uh, factors in students who move in as well as students who, uh, withdraw. And historically, you are a district that has seen outmigration across all of your grade groupings. So more students are moving out than moving in, and your classes will get, you know, slightly smaller year over year. Um, what we've seen is over the last few years, the level of that outmigration has decreased, and you've actually had, uh, some years where you're experiencing that in-migration. So more students moving in than moving out. Um, including this past year at the elementary level, where we had, uh, net in-migration, uh, for only the second time in, uh, that almost 20-year period that we're looking at. Um, similarly, the, the middle school, uh, has historically averaged a much greater level of that outmigration. Last few years, we've had a mix of, you know, smaller outmigration or a slight in-migration as well. And then similarly, the high school, our outmigration has decreased over the last four years or so. So getting into our enrollment projections, uh, we use the state-standard methodology, the cohort survival, and we, uh, really use that first part of our work to inform, um, our model and making sure that the model that we picked for East Windsor reflects all of those demographic and housing and historic enrollment trends that we evaluate. And this is really the industry standard, uh, and the, the state's accepted methodology as well. Um, for next year, we have a little bit of a unique circumstance with the change in kindergarten entry age, um, where they're switching from calendar year to a, um, September through August. Um, and so we know that uh, with the change this year, there's a smaller pool of students who are eligible unless they receive a waiver, um, working with the district. We were able to get an understanding of the number of waivers that have been issued. And so we're anticipating a slightly smaller kindergarten class next year than you've experienced in the recent past. Um, but you've, uh, had a, a number of families who have requested and were granted waivers, um, who don't meet those new entry age requirements, but, um, will be entering kindergarten through the process. So persistency ratios, a little technical, but, um, I think it warrants a little bit of an explanation because this is really a driver of our model. So persistency ratios, um, look at how much a grade grows or shrinks as it moves from one year to the next. And so, see a lot of, um, decimal points here. Anything over a one indicates that the class got bigger as it moved from one grade to the next. Anything under one means the grade or that cohort, uh, shrank. And this kind of speaks to that net migration chart we looked at a few slides ago, where, um, historically, you know, you've had a lot fewer of these ratios, um, over one. But over the last few years, we've started to see a greater number of, of classes grow. We use what we call our estimated migration, which looks at our most stable grades, one through seven and two through eight, compares to them year over year. Um, and over the last two years, on, for those grades, you have experienced, um, positive net in-migration, um, including, uh, almost a 2% net in-migration for 22-23. That's decreased, um, to just 0.2% this year. But again, marks one of the few years where we've seen, uh, net in-migration for the community. So when we developed your model, we wanted to make sure that, um, we're kind of capturing that, that trend where we're switching from a net outmigration community to a net in-migration community. We also have to prepare birth projections, um, to forecast the last five kindergarten classes in our 10-year window. We did prepare, um, a demographic-based model off of the census data. And again, that stable trend that we've seen over the last, um, 10 years or so, we are anticipating to continue. We always prepare three models of projections, knowing that, you know, just to ball, to see what the economic or housing conditions are going to be, um, especially in years six through 10 of our projections. Um, so we like to run a, a series of what-if models that help you, um, test different scenarios. So should the community trend a little higher on the enrollment side? How might that impact your long-range plan? If we trend a little lower, how's that going to impact your plan? Um, we always recommend, uh, the medium model, which is best supported by all of that data that, um, I showed you on the earlier slides, um, which shows that net in-migration trend continuing, although at, uh, you know, a small rate. Um, but that's in line with the more recent past that we've seen. The low model would be, uh, more of a, uh, return to that net outmigration that we've seen. So that would be kind of a recessionary model. Uh, and the high model, it's really our most optimistic, you know, should the housing market turn around, sales, you know, increase and be at a sustained high level, um, the high model may be the, um, um, some of the most aligned with that, um, what-if scenario, and we're projecting elevated levels of in-migration. What you can see is that, you know, at the midpoint, um, of, of our projections, where we're, we're based on known data, so known births and existing students, our models are pretty close together. And as we get into year six through 10, those lines start to, um, to decrease. And, uh, or excuse me, they start to, the gap starts to widen between the various models. But overall, medium model showing largely stable enrollment, the low showing a slight decrease, the high showing a slight increase. This just breaks it down by facility. Uh, again, OGA, the State Office of Grants Administration, uses the eight-year peak projected enrollment, the year you submit a, a grant application for determining, um, your reimbursement. Um, and so we prepared 10 years, uh, and, um, whenever you submit, you'll use the eight-year window following that. So for Broadbrook Elementary, looking at pre-K four, we're holding pre-K enrollment constant because it's, it's largely based on policies. Um, it's not something you forecast, um, but we're holding, uh, existing levels, uh, stable over that 10-year period. Uh, but we're showing enrollment to decrease slightly next year as that small kindergarten class enters. And then largely returning to levels that you've seen this year, between 480 and 490 students. Uh, peaking at 490 students in that 29-30 school year. At the middle school, we're projecting a, um, a decrease over the next three years as some smaller classes move up to the middle school. But then enrollment is going to rebound and exceed current levels over the last, um, five years of the projections, peaking at 317 students. And then the high school is projected to stay, um, relatively stable, uh, with some ups and downs in any given year, based on the size of your incoming freshman class, and your graduating 12th grade class. Uh, but that's going to peak slightly higher than today at, uh, 278 students. This just shows a breakdown by grade with the peaks highlighted for each of the grade groupings. With that, I'm happy to, actually, let me summarize just the trends quickly and then, um, happy to answer any questions, um, from, uh, or, uh, or public. So, um, just to kind of summarize some of the key things, we saw, um, there's been an uptick in in-migration over the last two school years, uh, that we, we tried to make sure that we captured in our model. Um, and that's been particularly felt at the elementary, middle schools. Births have been stable and are projected to remain stable over the next five years. So we're anticipating a pretty stable kindergarten classes with the exception of next year with the change in entry age. And under that recommended medium model, we're projecting overall, um, generally stable enrollment. Um, some slight growth in the tail end of our model, reaching, um, 1,073 students by year 10, with, um, you know, largely stable enrollment, uh, in all three buildings with some ups and downs, just depending on the size of the cohort. And we do have a high and a low, you know, by school, by grade that we've included in our report as well. Um, again, that can be what-if options that you look at if you're contemplating, um, you know, any construction, um, saying, you know, whatever we build, can the high model fit it? But it's always a good exercise, um, to go through as well, just as kind of a guess. I'll set them.
Any questions? Brandon?
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, what did you come over? Um, some questions I had. One was, you said that, um, you had against some assumption, going back to check your assumptions about South Windsor, and what had happened there, and I wondered what those assumptions were. Uh, and the second thing is, you had mentioned trends of students who are currently in other public schools. You've noticed a trend of them coming back. Is that included in your number? I said, it, it, I, I just, you had, well, you're expecting an uptick in births and, and students, and then, you know, we're, um, we're having a, uh, sort of an educational renaissance here. And that's sort of what happened in South Windsor. To a degree, I think a lot of people went to South Windsor because my kid can get a better education there. And we're doing some really great things, school, district, and I just want to make sure that that type of stuff is captured here, so that we don't end up with, you know, considering whatever the assumptions are that you made for South Windsor, that we don't end up with the same problems that South Windsor currently has.
Sure. Yeah, so I'll, I'll kind of answer the first part first. So the, the driver in South Windsor is they have seen what we call an affinity grouping in the demographic world. So they've seen a, a large growth in their South Asian population. And that demographic group in particular has, has been the demographic group that's driving a lot of their enrollment growth. Uh, and that is not a population where, when we look at your, um, student database by race and ethnicity, we're not seeing a tremendous growth in that population in East Windsor or any of the towns around East Windsor. Um, to your point, you know, the investments they made in their school facilities, I'm sure contributed to that. Um, I've worked in, you know, other districts that have invested in their facilities that haven't seen that same level of uptick that South Windsor's seen. So South Windsor, in a lot of ways, is unique. Um, Broughton and Manchester both have under, undertaken, um, construction programs for most of their facilities. They have not seen that same uptick that we saw in South Windsor either. Um, so I think there's a lot of kind of localized, unique things to South Windsor that are driving their trend. And to your second part, um, about the regional magnet students and how they're incorporated into our model, that's all incorporated into our persistency ratio. So, um, the trends over the last five or six years are what's driving our model. And the, the model assumes that the trends that we've seen over the last five years are going to continue under that medium model. And over that period, we've seen a decreasing number of, um, students attending regional magnet programs. That's one of the contributors to that net in-migration we've seen in recent years. That's built into our model. Um, so we feel, you know, confident that we've captured that in the medium model. Should, should you want to look at, well, what if, you know, even more students or we, we start to see returns of, of more students, um, then, you know, we, we can support with kind of the recent data, the high model's probably a good, um, proxy for that. You're welcome.
Other questions?
Hey. Um, thank you. I have, it's, it's, I was going to ask a similar question, um, but maybe a different approach. I mean, I think some of us think, probably most of us think people will move to South Windsor because of the quality of the schools, and that particular demographic had, there was a Muslim mayor, that was a senator, he was, uh, the community had a very big effort to, to, uh, to make itself, uh, you know, friendly for the first rules. And I think that combination of high-quality schools and, uh, sort of that effort, those efforts probably contribute to that demographic. Yeah, but at the end of the day, people move to South Windsor largely, I think a lot of us believe it's the quality of the schools. Just the way they go to Glassenberg or quality schools or West Hartford. But the model doesn't really, it's, and no criticism of it, I understand it's a, it's what the state, but it sounds like that the model, um, assumes for the most part, in terms of quality of location, you're going to continue to do what you've been doing. And it has to do with, like you said, demographics, changes in population and things like that. There's nothing in there accounting for, specifically accounting for changes in the quality of the schools. This must come up a lot, I would say, when you do your work.
Yep.
Um, so is it that you generally, the, the general thought is, like you said, you could look at the high, the high-level model for maybe more robust growth? Um, but you don't track, you don't track the quality of the education in there. Just assume that, that, uh, it's sort of like the people, the demographic trends are for a variety of reasons, and one of them may be education, but they could be other things, right? Just make that assumption. Just make that assumption.
Yeah. And I think one of the challenges of doing projections is that we, we have to rely on historical data to project the future. And if we speculate then the state's going to not accept our numbers and say, where's the data to support it? So, you know, to your point, it's, it's hard to to see how, how a change like that is going to impact the model.
And so the question, we won't have an answer, but I'm going to ask them anyway, because is there, is there any data as to at what level of education is required or what level of statistics, quality of education is required in order to influx based on education and the quality of education? Or you would say, we don't have that data. We don't really know. Like, does it have to reach a certain level of quality? Where it's perceived as being preferred over other communities where people are going to choose that community? Because we can go from, not to be negative, Brandon, but I'm just asking the question. Like, we can go from where we are now to a 50% improvement. And it may still be significantly below, say, this town like South Windsor that's a different level. Is there, there's no data out there or are people doing that work to figure out where you need to get in order to be able to draw more students in or to retain that are here that might be looking elsewhere?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any research on that. It's such a complex, you know, scenario that you, that you laid out, right? Of kind of what influences people to move where they move, right? You know, I've worked in several dozen communities over the last 10 years, including a lot of districts that are in similar, you know, peer groups or or district reference groups, if you're familiar with that. And the trends are kind of all over the place. So if I look at South Windsor relative to its peers and its reference group, some of those districts are shrinking, some of those are growing, you know? So there's, there's so much localized trends, you know, and education's obviously important, but beyond that, that are factoring into people's decisions. That's possible to, the model.
That's a good answer. Thank you. And also, you didn't mention that specifically here, you say private school, talked about magnet schools. And you eliminated open choice students. I didn't hear, and I'm sure you had it in the text there, but what happened with private schools? People's preferences for, we have a lot of students going to private schools or is that steady? If you can, if you know off the top of your head or not?
So the only data that we had available, since there's not like a state database like there is for public school students is withdrawals from the district.
Right.
So there was, you know, a modest number of students that withdrew to go to primarily Catholic schools in the region. But it was not a significant number.
Yeah.
There was a slide about that.
There was, yes.
I was taking my notes and listening to him, but basically the words just add a bit of a challenge. Kids aren't required to notify like local school districts if their child is in a private or local school. So that's the indicative, they've, when they withdraw, we get the indication, we get, we send their records, we have that data. But theoretically, we have a student that like from birth like went to private and we never, like they could be living East Windsor, we would have no like record, not, yeah, right? But you said with modest, either way.
That was pretty small. Okay.
Other questions? Yes, Chris.
So, so pre-K is really the only, actually, open choice is a good, a good thing to note as well. So a few, a few policies do shape enrollment, open choice being one of them. So our model assumes that you're going to have the same level of open choice enrollment that you've had in the recent past. So that's kind of incorporated. Pre-K is, is the only grade grouping that we don't do a demographic based model because the number of pre-K seats you offer aren't, isn't demographically based. It's based on, you know, how many students have special needs and kind of the the availability of you guys to have space for pre-K classrooms. So we just assume that your current policy around pre-K, that current number of classrooms is going to continue unless there's expansion plans that have already been discussed, in which case sometimes we'll use that number.
Based on that, definitely. I don't know exactly the choice which we have. Have you looked at what's happening in part of the students are coming from? Or if not, their trend is going to be reversed if they make changes in the future?
I, we didn't look at that. I know a lot of communities I work in, the, the waitlist for open choices substantial. So it's, it's really limited by the number of seats that the suburban communities offer. And all the students that apply don't get it. So even if there was a decrease in interest, I'm sure the waitlist is long enough where there's not going to be kind of a major change in that, at least in.
Yeah, I mean, we know the waitlist, our year with waitlist for the choice program, we have above 70 students that attend. And we could take, we could take 30 more students if we wanted to, which is not, we have a strategic plan on how we integrate that program. Those things and changes with my administration. So that I can tell you it's not a concern of ours as far as defining choice. If we want to, we can increase it.
Other questions or comments? Hearing any?
Alright, thank you.
So also with us tonight are consultants from CSG. I'm not going to put you guys on the spot, but so we wanted to complete the demographic study. What do we do now to further the conversation in charge of arriving at what if any next steps are appropriate for the community to consider?
Well, from our presentation back in the beginning of February, I think we laid out a number of different options. I, I think really it would be the community, you know, what and Board of Ed, you know, what would be best for East Windsor? You know, one of the options, I think we, we said combine both the high school and middle school. You know, and have one less facility that you have to maintain and, and, you know, make sure, you know, and pay to operate, but it was also rightsizing the schools to the enrollment in the enrollment projections. And actually, I asked Sam while we were going through this, did we compare the NESDEC with what we, what we just heard from the consultants? And unfortunately, we didn't. But I don't think we're that far off.
Yeah, just, just doing a quick glance at what Patrick did versus the NESDEC report, the numbers are pretty comparable. They're off by maybe like 20 or 30, which sounds like a lot, but I think when doing projections like this being that close is is pretty, pretty good. I think in terms of next steps, if the district and the town decide that they want to go down, you know, a route, a further exploration of their options, I think the next steps would be having Q A and M, who's the architect, finish their feasibility study. And then if this is something that everyone is really considering, the next step would be doing ed specs and getting those prepped to an extent. And the ed specs basically will determine the programmatic requirements of your district. And then based on that, you can go into developing a conceptual design and getting more concrete numbers in terms of cost based on that conceptual design. Because that conceptual design will be based on your ed specs that you guys put together.
So, Donnie Tootman and I have spoken about kind of in-house, what we expect next steps to be. And just to share our thought process with what you just roughly laid out, right? There, Donnie Tootman is arranging tours of similar school districts that have alternate configurations. And I think our interest is following through on those tours to get a sense of, of if there is a model around that we can actually lay eyes on that is a good match for our community. And then at some point, we certainly want to engage the general public in what their thoughts on a direction are. Does it make sense to start doing community surveying or workshops prior to the completion of the QA network or, or should that be done after?
I, in my opinion, and you can chime in if you want, but I think it makes sense to do the QA and M report because the QA and M report is going to say from a professional architect, this is the current condition of each of your facility. And just like.
Yeah, I think what Jason is getting at is, you know, yes, we're going to finish that QA and M report, but taking it to the next step as to what we should do in terms of combining, leaving separate.
We're looking for a plan, like to get to ultimately to get to a referendum if we decide to go.
Well, I, I mean, you brought up a good point. I would engage the community and say, what is it that the community wants, right? And there's ways to do that. We work with a consultant that, you know, does public you know, community relations and can hold you know, uh, uh, meetings such as this, but also put together flyers, send them out, get the feedback. You know, the, the, the big thing about doing that is getting the responses. It's, it's it's, you know, very important that if we're going to go through this process, that we do get the responses. We've noticed, for instance, I think it was Farmington. You know, you don't get a lot of responses. You may get 10 to 20% of your residents that will actually respond. So it is important that if the community is interested in this, that they do respond to those those flyers that are sent out and asked to be returned. You know, and on there, we can have a number of different options that we went through back in February. We won't have them refined to a point of, yeah, this is what it's going to cost because that's the next step. So once it's defined as to what the community wants, combined school, leave them separate, whatever that case may be. You know, that kind of sets the, that, that tells us, okay, now we're going to move in a direction to do a conceptual estimate, I mean, excuse me, a conceptual design based on what the community feedback is. And then that will, once that conceptual design is completed, then we can do conceptual estimate and we start, you know, narrowing down the, the cost for, for something like this.
So to, it sounds like you are a different thing, but just so I can say and clear, we do the school business, then we start doing a community survey around wants and needs of the general community. And then we QA and, you know, preliminary.
Well, yeah, I think what Sam was talking about with the QA and M report, they started their, they need to finish that report. So understanding that we're going to move in a different direction will give them, okay, now we can finalize this, we can get it out. And then, quite honestly, they'll probably be on hold for a little while until we do this community engagement, finish the community engagement.
What's the turnaround as far as what they have left to prepare?
Not, not.
It shouldn't be, I, I'd have to go back and ask them, but it shouldn't be too much because we already have a draft of it. And I think my, my idea about getting that, you know, in addition to doing all the visits and stuff is if the community asks, well, what's wrong with the current schools? Rather than just having, you know, someone say something, say, you know, well, the ceiling's falling or whatever. You have someone who's saying, nope, like your HVAC system is not working, your doors are not, you know, energy, if it, whatever it is. At least you have documentation of that to kind of support what you're asking the community.
Those things could be included, what else to be included in the pamphlets, whatever you send out to the, the public to get their input because otherwise you're just getting a pie in the sky. Well, wow, wow.
Yeah. And another, so so another district that we worked with is running into the same issue where they're trying to get, get a referendum pass. They actually only have one school in their district from pre-K to eight, I think it is. And what they did was they actually held tours of the school on multiple occasions to show the community. This is what the current state of our facility is. And you know, because of X, Y, and Z, these are the reasons why we need to, you know, renovate or get a new school. So that's also an opportunity to actually show people firsthand of what the conditions actually are and what the problems are.
So I, so I'll give some little bit because we had the previous joint board meeting and we did have like a report as far as facilities, talk about them, local problems. So was that?
That was a draft.
That was a good draft.
So QA, yeah. So QA and did that report under the assumption that you guys were going to go after HVAC grants and roof repolishments. And then we kind of took a look at it and said, you know, if we, if we send this to the state and ask for an HVAC grant, they're, they most likely won't approve it because you have issues that are going to blow the new hot and cold air that you're going to install outside because your windows and your doors and things weren't adequate. So.
There's no reason why those two things can't happen simultaneously.
No, I don't think so. Yeah.
All like essentially.
Congrats.
That was correct.
Yeah.
They did so that we have the most up-to-date information to engage.
Yep. Yeah, I don't see why not.
The options presented to eliminate the high school, like was that, I'm just thinking, so tomorrow on.
Yeah.
Or stuff that, you know.
So I can run through real quick what the options were that we presented last time, if that would be helpful. I'll just run through them quickly. And then if you have questions, just stop me. So the first option we said was renovating as new. Which was option A, right sizing the buildings, meaning make the buildings the correct size based on your enrollment or your highest eight-year enrollment. Option B was renovate as new, combining the middle school and high school into the middle school. And then moving grade five back to the elementary school and doing the renovate as new option, I believe with the elementary school.
Next up, you, yeah, second. The first option was renovate as new, both the middle school and high school?
Renovate as new, all three, middle, middle, high, elementary, middle, high. Option C was renovate as new, keeping the buildings at their current size with your current enrollment, which could potentially affect your reimbursement rate because your buildings would be considered oversized by the state. Based on the square footage of each building in the current enrollment. Option D was renovate as new, combining the middle and high school into the high school. And then moving grade five, like we said earlier, back to the elementary school. Option E was building three brand new schools, so new construction. Obviously, the issue with that is, is where do you put all three? And then option F was doing the miscellaneous upgrades, which I think we all are in agreement that that's just kind of putting Band-Aids over things right now. So.
So with any of the options with the stepping of the Band-Aids, what would a time, like a realistic timeframe be like that that would go into effect? How long would it take from the start of it to it, to we have the schools up running?
Do you have the school up and running?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it depends on depends on how quickly, you know, the town moves forward with the, yeah. So about three to five years. Yeah.
Should be all of those. So piggyback off of that, then in fact, then kind of some of the stuff he liked him, like so three to five years down the road now, we're at a kind of the next bracket of.
So no.
In regards to this school size, so you may lose like I already presented, that school kids will kind of be the high school familiar based now. So when we have that same, you know, well, we're groomed to have, you know, the kids attending the school the same sizes.
Yeah, that's what we would project. So when we submit a grant application, so when I say three to five years, it's three to five years, as Jason stated, you know, once we decide on what you want to do and we submit a grant application, by the time we hire architects, get it designed and do construction and finish construction, it'll be three to five years. So when we submit the grant application, the, the highest projected enrollment, when, at the year that we submit, let's just say it was 25, 26 school year, because I'm using next year. If that was the highest eight-year projected enrollment, we get to use that highest eight-year projected enrollment on the grant application. If a year eight was the highest, then we get to use year eight. But I think, you know, it is a, either a, a stable trend or kind of downward trend, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. And I think one of the, to kind of add to that, one of the things that'll be important, as, as mentioned earlier, is the ed spec process. So the ed spec process will take the enrollment projections and translate that into physical classrooms. So we have a population of X number of students. Well, how many classrooms is that? And looking at the size of a lot of your classes, you're kind of teetering probably on the edge of, you know, maybe needing an extra classroom if you sway a couple of students one way or another. So that's going to, I think, be part of that ed spec process. You know, do you build in a little bit of flexibility, you know, should you trend, you know, a little bit higher? You know, do you build in a little bit of flexibility, you know, should you trend, you know, a little bit higher?
Yep. Eight year, ten year.
We did not, just the student.
It's difficult to project that because so much of that is dependent on the housing market, which we don't know. Kind of what it's going to shake out to be in the next three or five years. So there there are, people can do population projections by age. For such a small, you know, community. You know, it may, it's probably not going to be tremendous reliable.
Population is part of where than your. Number popular coming in.
Joe, go ahead, but just take your name and your address, please.
We don't project class sizes as part of the enrollment projections. We're just looking at the number of students.
Yeah, with that. You you get your square footage off, yeah, there's uh, what the state calls a space standards worksheet. And you put in your um, grade range. Pre K to to five, pre K to four, whatever that whatever that grade range is, middle school, five to eight, six to eight, whatever it is. And it gives you an average square foot. Um. And then you put in your uh, your highest projected enrollment, it calculates your uh, your uh, square foot area. Um, that's your square foot, but that's your square foot area that the state will reimburse you at your reimbursement rate. Um, you go over that. Then the reimbursement rate starts to come down. Yeah, you know, some some districts will decide to have smaller classes and bigger schools, but they and know, you know, they know that they're going to take a hit on the reimbursement rate. You know, that's up to them as to whether or not, you know, we inform them, look, you're you're going to reduce your reimbursement rate as a result of doing this. Some of them choose to do it. Yes.
Um, considering, I guess the Edspec takes into consideration things like the art loan. Where you have all that space through the gyms.
Right.
Cafeteria is.
Right.
Home ec takes a lot of space, water. All that stuff, that's.
Correct. So we we do, um. You know, we do our own educational specifications, working with uh, the district. Um, and how we typically do that is we'll set up times with the um. Uh, with the district, if they have math department, heads of math department, English department, history department. Or whoever they want to have, we'll bring them in on fifteen minute, half hour, minute or a half hour uh, intervals. To interview. What do you need? What are you looking for? What do you want to have? Um, and we have a retired educational professional, um, that was, um. A teacher in elementary, uh, principal, elementary, principal, high school, uh, assistant superintendent, actually in the city of Hartford. Um, so, you know, this person is very well versed. Uh, in education and educational facilities, especially scheduling. Um, and works along with um, uh, us and and the district to make sure that, um. You know, you're getting what it is that you need. Yeah. Now, do you do your special ed here or do you send that out? Do you, do you, um, some districts will. Send their children to a different district.
Um, with the number of actions that you have before we start to engage with public feedback. Would it be in our best interest to kind of narrow it down only that? Or? So. We should, in the teams that we've set up to talk about it, we should probably start to think about. What's the best course of action and then have a, at least a narrow.
Correct. Yeah, we would highly suggest that.
Anybody else? I guess we'll be in touch with our our CSG folks, um. Jordan, thank you very much for.
Thank you.
For being here.
Thanks, Robert.
There's public participation. Thanks. Are there any members of the public who would like to address? I guess the members of the board of education. So the process of now there's a facility, some committee of the board that Sarah and I sit on as well. Ultimately, the full words will have the board of education will have to make a decision, or the selectmen will have to make a decision. And they're the ones who trigger a town meeting here directly.
But I definitely think we want, what we're talking about is wanting to get some more community input before we get to that stage. Like, we want to have community meetings, we want to do surveys. But we're asking, like, should we break it down to like three choices and then have those community meetings and surveys? So we're not, you know, starting with all six choices. Because. You know, you might get, six is a lot to get feedback and just have like you're splitting it into too many small parts and you don't get one good. You know, so. Yeah, they are.
The other thing, and CSG has provided six options. That doesn't mean there's only six options.
Correct.
I was just going to say, just because we presented on these six different things, if there's something that you guys come up with that you feel would better suit your community. That's totally fine. Um, you just have to tell us what that is, obviously. These were just the ones that we thought would be the best ones to bring up to you guys.
Really, I mean, what they can't take into account. Over the last ten years. I don't quote administrations. They can't take, well, they're just starting now. Everybody's putting in the effort, schools, challenging. I'm afraid if you get them in a compressed. You start building, you have everyone country, you have, that's going to start happening. So if we test out too much. You know. If you get a hundred houses right now, that's down. That's one. Where how? Heard some options, like elementary school, high school, it's really tough. I guess that's what we knew, we can build up or something that, I mean, the parking right now. Still got people barking. You know, this, a lot of these things have to be really thought out. It's going to be big since schools, every since since. Some of the waste material, chain of stuff, little chance here. You know, given monitoring in school, that's all everybody's leaving. Just during summer, too long, starting with six, seven. Two kids for each group every year, taking a lot of stuff. Losing that because you don't have. So it's going to be great to have nice facilities, got to have the stuff that you want, it's going to have. Got to have. So we're doing this, but I figure we're going to wait for prices. So we started all pretty. I'm not saying, I don't want. Pretty steady and going to have. More families wanting to leave the location, but I'm starting small schools. You know, four, five, a million. Except this college. And four, five, a million, if you want to build. It's this other thing, if we. If we have smaller schools. Take a certain percentage just so you can get more money, fed and stayed and remember. Oh, stop putting out so many names. If you build a housing, you have no zero cans. You know, practice. I don't know a lot of new talent that are going on here.
Yeah, you can come to facilities.
I was thinking of putting my academic dollars. So much. Consider, because everything's been short term here, short sight.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Uh, Rachel Lawrence, uh, church street. For a long time, I think, East Windsor. As a community, we failed to even ask the questions. We failed to build a new school. We were hesitant as a community to ask. The community to do it because we always assumed that we failed. And. That's begun to change. And we've begun, I think, as a community to build a sense of, of we are a community. And we have asked in recent times for. Uh, the public to approve referendums and budgets have been passed. That was not always the case. We're building a community involves not just the schools. But it involves a new playground in the park. It involves lights at the soccer field. These things all contribute to. Us being a community and us building a community. And we're moving in that direction. Uh, we need to lose the sense that we can't do things because we can, and we've shown in recent years. That we can accomplish things that fill our community and provide our citizens. With a greater sense. Of belonging and a great, greater sense of community. That'll teach kids to play on soccer teams. But it's not a single effort, it's a concerted effort all the way around with the focus of building community. And. This is a step in the right direction. If it properly presented. To East Windsor. East Windsor will respond in a positive way. And so I I'm glad to see this go forward. Our sports do need to be upgraded. And, uh. I'm glad we're embarking on the process. Thanks.
Other public comments? We talked about. Yeah, on South Water Street. Networks. Any other public comments?
Uh, uh, Nicole, just uh, thirty clearly, just one thing, I know, just some of the options, as we consider, if we did consider. The moving the schools, I I do think K to six would be more realistic than K to five, just personally. And then a seven to twelve. So that's my personal opinion. So I would be like to see that as an option. The other thing, I think, to the point they're making, right, like, I would also wonder, like, if we did get to a point where we did combine the two schools. If all of a sudden we did see, you know, you know, start to see growth. What are we doing with the that or vacant school? Would there be opportunity to eventually develop that area again if needed? So. I don't know, just, you know, lots of things certainly to think about. So thank you all, though, for putting in the work and thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Actually, just have a question and a suggestion. I'm wondering, are we going to publish the demographic report, like on the town of East Windsor, show the school. Website? And I think that that's a good way to start this conversation or keep the conversation that has been started is to actually then post that link on Facebook and. Um, let people see, you know, right from the start, where it will come from.
Yeah, no, it's scheduled to be on our website tomorrow. And, um, just like the CSG facility study that's been on our website since then, joint meeting. On board bed, um, and there's actually a tab that says facilities, so certainly we'll be adding updating. As this work continues to progress with meetings such as this. Okay, thanks.
Just, I think, one more thing, too. I don't know, just I know that you use the the East Windsor Public School Facebook page for to promote tomorrow. I just think, like, promoting this through that avenue may be helpful as well.
Leaving people like myself to pay attention. When it's, I'm excited about that. Search out, come to the mail or say it's out, something that you need to operate.
Sixty nine. That's a glorious sixteen, true true. And so I'm just thinking about, you know, as the free kind of a survey that may go out and. Have you thought about who developed that survey? And, you know, as a pre-person, some of the stuff too, and some things can go out simultaneously. But. I didn't even know what the survey looked like, what would you be asking? And, you know, all those questions as far as how we develop that survey. Are important, you know, not just, you know, for the schools.
Yeah, so I mean, do that, those initial and bring on merry conversations. That's something that we might carry to board, something with society, certainly.
Yes, yeah.
I'd be a very recent. Yes.
Yeah, because we haven't asked specific questions like this, right, a lot of the syllabus.
No.
So that would be.
Yeah, so we're moving in that direction.
But I would also encourage, not just from this, you know. I know we've done it, and it's found out primarily to parents of the school. Uh, what I would say is, again, this, some of this stuff needs to go out to the community. And so we have, that's the, the facilities committees. Yep. The whole is to, yep. Um, engage the entire town, not just parents. We, they're all taxpayers. Yeah, we would hear from them.
Jason and I also thought, uh, we share, so like, um, putting it out on the town side by also the school side, so that's getting.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
As possible.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm also from a personal, huge job.
Well, and it all sounds like new information to me from this conversation is that CSG actually has resource that can be used to help develop that.
Yeah, and that's what I would say is like a good survey would be somebody who loves.
I wanted to be surveyed.
No, no, just one part.
Our local service to social America as we get through the process, I just don't want it.
But also I would form, like, again, we've come to facilities for where there's a back and forth conversation.
Preliminary, we talked about also incorporating, um, strategic plan development strategies, um, you know, the, you said, you have the. Visual displays in each corner, we put the stick around the one click over, put thing, you know.
Yeah.
Um, there are facilitators that can divide that. And what. As you and I discussed, is taking everything whole, helps us by, in the other direction.
Yeah.
Definitely it's us to write a bit of a shotgun shot instead of a writing shot. Right, you're going to try a whole bunch of different things to get that picture in the heart before the next.
And you can present that too, or those, whatever you get, you can then present as. Um, whoever comes for the conversations, right, you can say this for what you're doing as well. And that's even starting going to the. So a little bit deeper, you know, into into more of the discussed.
Yeah, my town actually did, I assume, so encourages participation.
Oh, that's cool, yeah.
And then you can go into your separate.
Yeah, yeah.
So that it wasn't even about bringing people to a location, they go from right living.
I think anyways, you're right, yeah.
Other comments or feedback? Seeing none, I'd ask a member of the board of selectmen for a motion to adjourn.
Will that we adjourn at seven eleven P M?
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? There's a non debatable, all in favor?
Okay.
Opposed? Board of selectmen are adjourned at seven eleven.
And I would ask for a motion from a board of education member to adjourn. And I think. All in favor, board of education?
Thank you.